Welcome to the June 6 meeting of the Town Sheriff's Select Board. I'm going to ask the Assistant Town Administrator Diane Moore to read the agenda.
Good evening. Tonight, the board will vote to amend or approve the agenda. Then we'll have a public comment period. And then consideration of a consent agenda, and under that is the payroll warrant. Minutes of April 23rd. Next meeting dates of June 20th, July 11th, August 1st, and August 15th. And I'd like to make a note that on July 11th, that will be a seminar that's being presented by KP Law regarding the open meeting law. And we'll also be meeting with advisory regarding gear and transfers. There is a one-day pouring license for June 15th. And then Kim Chester is here to discuss an email she sent regarding litter on the roads. Then a discussion surrounding the possibility of appointing a permanent building committee that was requested by the chair. Heidi Doye, our treasurer, is here. She's asking the board for approval to proceed with issuing a ban for the library. And then administration of special projects, request of select board member Jeff Walgren. Then under routine business, the town administrator report, he's not here, but I do have a short update regarding the sustainability coordinator. Then selectmen reports, and under executive session, Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, subsection 3, to discuss strategy with respect to threatened potential litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the town, and the chair so declares regarding the library. And then Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, subsection 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. Our litigation, if an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. That's the police, union, contract, negotiation, and grievances. And the board will go into executive session and not return to public session from there.
Thank you, Diane. I will, do we have any amendments to the agenda? If not, I'll take a motion to approve.
Well, before we move to approve, I just want to note that we're starting a half-hour late because one of our members is giving a speech at the high school graduation. So Eric Johnson is coming. Apparently he has a long speech. I would move to approve with no changes.
Second.
All those in favor?
He texted me last night with no speech.
Thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda with the payroll warrant minutes, the next meeting schedule, as well as a one-day pouring license. Do we have anything that needs to be removed from that list?
No, but there's a minor typo on the minutes.
Oh, okay.
Where it says, how's the word metting instead of meeting?
Okay. I'll change that.
So that's a non-substantive little typo.
So we'll, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with that one change to the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Great. All right. Kim, you're up next, if you'd like to come up into the microphone and discuss the email that you sent to us and talk about a problem that we all see in town. Just, if you're on TV, just if you could identify yourself and your address, that'd be great.
Certainly. I'm Kim Chester. I live at 6 Perry Street, and my family has been in Sherburne since 1997. I want to thank you all very much for inviting me to come and speak with the select board tonight about the growing problem of litter in Sherburne and everywhere, but baby steps we're going to start in Sherburne. I just wanted to share some insights, since I've been picking up litter for about the past 10 years on my running route. I was encouraged to get into this not glamorous activity by one of my neighbors who one day left a pile of litter on my front steps. And I came out and was rather disgusted by the display, and then I started realizing that she couldn't even carry it back to her house, there was so much of it. So what I did is I deployed some of these trash cans at Trailheads, and I put two out to start. And then the litter grew, and I had three, and then four, and five, and six, and I had seven of them at one time. It was just too much to carry. There's just so much litter that is accumulating. Neighbors, though, seeing these began to help picking up the litter, and these are not for people who are driving down the road, because trust me, those people are not looking for a trash can. They are just throwing the trash wherever they feel like it. So this is really for volunteers who are picking up litter, and that's what they, that's what the purpose they serve. You can line it with a trash liner if you want to, so it's very easy to pick it out. And Sean and the community maintenance people have been very supportive when there are seven of them that are all full in terms of helping me out. They really only need to be emptied, since they're quite large, and you have one or two on a road, they only need to be emptied maybe once a month. They can handle that. So just in terms of the sheer quantities of the litter, I was in the software industry for a long time, and I do believe in the power of visual effects. So David, if you would share with us the collection, this is one person, three weeks, this one person every day deposits two Cumberland Farm coffee cups and a crumpled pack of blue L&amp;M's on the side of the road every single day.
Wow.
Over the past six months, that adds up to about 250 pieces of litter from one human. And at what point do you say enough is enough? We need to do something about that? So that's just one example of what's happening on our roads. Part of the problem, as I see it in Sherburne, are the perceptions of our residents. Community maintenance is responsible for picking up litter. People believe that. Prisoners are hired to pick up the litter. People believe that. The town organizes a once-a-year cleanup, and that's enough. That one day must be enough for us. Residents leave litter along their property lines. They're imagining someone is going to come and pick it up for them. People see litter as they're driving by, and studies have shown that the more litter that appears along the sides of the roads, the more people are encouraged to just add to it, and so that it gets in their subconscious and they throw litter. And people think there's nothing that we can do to stop it. So there are opportunities to change some of these perceptions. And I've done some research in terms of what other states, what other towns, what is happening across, really around the world. And one of the key things that comes out is to provide adequate and convenient waste management services. I would throw out that we might expand the pop-up trash cans and put them in places where we see there are hotspots for litter, certain roads, the heavily traveled roads through town, some of the areas that are about the town forests where people know they can throw their litter and no one will bother them or see them. To engage volunteers or affirm to empty the trash cans once a month, once every six months, once every two months, whatever is financially feasible, if we can get volunteers to do it, that's great. But I know that I can't even keep up with my seven on those four roads. Purchase and deploy some tools to help people keep clean. There are these great cigarette disposal units that could rest in all of our parking lots around town, in front of our businesses. If we wanted to, we could venture into dog waste collection dispensers. I know that I've seen them in other towns, and then you would have a separate bin for depositing the waste from those. Raising the awareness that we have a litter problem, because there are lots of people who don't understand that there isn't a vehicle right now, and really in any town, to pick it up on a regular basis. And I would propose that we form a group in Sherburne that represents a cross-section of the interests in our town, and engage the students in an education and research opportunity that really can be a cross-disciplinary approach to, can include, you know, geo-tagging and mapping, and put together a program with a marketable slogan and a positive message that they create, and we have leadership within the schools, and they are the leaders of the team going forward. We could potentially join an organization like Keep Massachusetts Beautiful, which offers so many programs that I couldn't even, wouldn't try to describe them here to you today, but really a wealth of information and incentives for energizing people in the town to take a look at the problem. Employ technology to track the litter by type, brand, and amount. Geo-tagging through apps like Literati would connect Sherburne and the kids, I think would love it, into the global effort to fight for litter, and you can get connected on a daily basis. I took pictures of 79 pieces of litter on Prospect Street the other night. I tagged them. They now know in this, every day they're tagging it. There's some 4 million pieces of litter that have been picked up since this gentleman started this app. I think we could also act, ask our contractors that work here in Sherburne to refrain from littering. Perhaps there's a pledge form that homeowners can use to say, "We'd love to have your services. We need you to sign this form so that your employees are not littering as they're driving through Sherburne." Deterrence would be litter bin availability, potentially cameras, trail cameras used in hotspots that get moved so they're not, you know, permanently in place to, which would maybe bother people in terms of the privacy issue. Litter pickup mandatory hours for anyone that we successfully prosecute, as opposed to worrying about fines and going through the court system. Perhaps there could be, you now owe us 30 hours of community service picking up litter all around town. And awareness that it is not okay to litter, and the slogan that I like to use is "Litter Up." Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kim. Go ahead, Jeff, please.
So many years ago, I was involved with a drive to address the litter problem here in town. We passed a bylaw which could be used both for a criminal complaint and/or a civil ticket, non-criminal ticket. If we had a meeting with the Framingham District Court, it's perhaps possible that we could have those convicted, instead of paying a fine, do some community service and then have the case dismissed. So there is an idea there that could be implemented. As part of the bylaw, we posted signs at the entrances to the community that talks about litter and says, "You're going to get in trouble if you litter in this town." I hope they're all still there. I don't know if they get hit by snowplows or whatever. The comment that people think that residents clean up. I do clean up. Down at my little part of Sherburne, I have either myself or some of my employees are out there picking up trash, and we pick up a lot. And we handle it privately. We don't, we don't, we don't involve CM&amp;D. We don't. We do it ourselves. We used to have prisoners that would come, and I haven't seen them for a while.
Do they still come, Suzie?
I think that would be a good idea to have them, to resume that program and have them come on a more frequent basis. So we do have the annual cleanup, but why not have prisoners come like every couple of months? And have some kind of regular, regular program. And I think it would make sense to ask the police to pursue some of these things. We do have a law. We do have penalties. And if you have somebody who's every day depositing stuff, you don't have to be a Sherlock Holmes to be able to build a case to charge somebody with something. You've got 250 examples of what the individual has done.
And very brand-conscious.
So why, why, why isn't that being prosecuted? So maybe we as a board...
Have you reported it?
We as a board should be asking our police department to pay special attention to this to get that done. And then the idea that you mentioned of having a committee, I love that idea, because that would allow somebody like yourself and others who have been troubled by this issue for a long time to have a avenue to pull things together and come back to the board with recommendations. And that would, that would set the stage for us to be able to have some votes here and ask different people to do different things. It's nice that CM&amp;D is helping you, but we as a board never asked or directed that CM&amp;D do it.
Correct.
He's doing it because he's a, he's a good guy.
Correct.
But if we were a little more organized and voters saw that this trash isn't just disappearing, that we're actually having town resources and ultimately taxpayer money going to this, that would be part of the education. So I would support that also. So those, those are my comments.
Chuck, did you have something?
A couple of quick comments. Yeah, I think the idea of a committee is great, partially just education. Jeanne Guthrie organizes the annual pickup.
Yes.
And last, I don't know, six or seven years, I've been doing the same stretch of Maple Street. And I can tell you each year, this year, Seagram's honey whiskey nips were very popular. But what's depressing is how many of it is just mass packaging, Cumberland Farms, cigarette butts, beer bottles, McDonald's, Burger King, Dunkin' Donuts. And I wish, it's what economists call the tragedy of the commons, that there isn't a fully allocated cost. I wish there was a cost for this trash, because people, you can tell which houses on Maple Street pick up the trash, because there's not a lot. And there are others where I can fill up a half a bag. So I think part of that is educational awareness. Another thought is that, I've seen the Trailhead cans at, on Hunting Lane, and also with the, not those, but the different, the trash cans at the Barber Reservation. Jack Cutner was a serial entrepreneur who lived in Sherburne. One of the companies he started is the biggest solar-powered trash compactor, Big Belly.
Yes.
I was pleased to see them in Ireland, and they're all over college campuses. And they are solar-powered, and they compact it down, so you don't have to pick it up as often. I'm happy to give Jack a call and see about either donating or letting us buy it at cost, because they're, they're good size. But I mean, I think that's part of what this committee could, could do. So thank you for raising it. We love talking trash on this committee, so giving us an opportunity, we appreciate that.
One other idea with some of the costs related to some of these bins, or like the dog waste at the Trailheads is, have you approached the Sherburne Business Association? Because they give out grants every year for things like this with their Brew Fest.
I have not approached. This is my first foray into talking about the problem.
Yeah, if there was a committee, I think they could go to the Sherburne Business Association and ask for a grant for some of this, and I think this is the kind of thing that they're looking to give money to, right? I think...
I think that's a great idea.
Well, that's why we need a committee.
Absolutely.
If we had a committee, it wouldn't be an individual going to the Business Association. It would be the town through a committee.
Right.
I was going to parallel that, which is, some of these streets in towns I've been in, you see where a certain company owns a street, which I think they're paying for the cleanup on that street. Like I've seen, Natick does this, has, you know, such-and-such nursery owns this section of the street, or maybe owns isn't the right word.
Adopt a highway.
Adopted, yeah. So it could be that, you know, we could find sponsors for a particular segment, you know, particularly like maybe even Cemetery Lane and the playground and baseball field area, maybe, I don't know.
I missed most of it, but the one, toward the end there, the one thing I heard about is about the nip bottles. And that's an issue everywhere, and many communities are actually legalizing them, but I think it should actually be a statewide, a statewide ban. The only purpose of nip bottles is that it helps you get around the open container laws so people can drink while they drive.
Suzie, do you have something to add?
Yes, Susan Tyler Westonaw. I agree with that. I live on Western Avenue. I can't tell you which trash I pick up, and the majority of it are the nip blocks. There should be twice the deposit on those, and there is no deposit, because nobody's buying those to stock them with the gallon.
They're buying them to drink, by the way.
Yeah, it's a quick shot of the way home or two or three. Anyways.
Remember when the GM plant was open?
Oh, yeah.
On shift change, that was just litter heaven.
They're all unwise. The, if I may, as far as my, as cemetery commissioner, I had a meeting last week over at MCI Framingham with Deputy Superintendent LaZott regarding getting a work crew out again and setting up a permanent schedule for the crews to take care of two of the cemeteries, one that belongs to the Department of Corrections, one that belongs to Commonwealth and Massachusetts. Both of them are related to the MCI, and they're both on Perry Street. So I had a meeting, and while I was there, Diane had given me a business card and information, and I dropped that off with Pearl. Deputy LaZott, regarding Sherburne and wanting additional helpers, obviously, for the litter. And she did say they shouldn't be in touch, and it was in two forms that they, they started a new program, I guess, and the two forms that have to be filled out by the town. So that was just this past week.
Great.
Comment, as far as quick note, I've seen these, and those are wonderful at the Trailheads, where it's people that are conscientious, they're up there walking and they're picking up something, or they're walking the streets. If you put one of those on my room, there's no trails that go along Western Avenue.
Right.
So it's, and, so trails that cross, yes, I can understand. If you put barrels, you were mentioning the solar compressible barrels. You put that out in the Barber Reservation, I'm going to tell you right now, it's going to be full every night, because people will come and get their cars. You've all seen it, you buy a cup of coffee at Dunkin' Donuts, and you're trying to get out of the drive-thru, and the car in front of you is yet unloading all the trash out of their car into that barrel instead of just the cup from the day before. So if you put barrels out, they will fill it.
They do.
So if you put them in parking lots, we're going to be increasing and encouraging more trash. I agree with that on the Trailheads.
Can I address something? It's kind of interesting. So Sherburne actually has a very liberal, whatever it is, transfer station. You pretty much can throw anything away any time you want. That actually results in less trash. You see the communities are doing pay-as-you-throw and stuff like that, so they're actually having more legal dumping issues right now. And look at any kind of abandoned area, anything like that, and it's just dumping upon dumping, and you know people probably emptying their cars because it's convenient at that time, and it avoids, again, a pay-as-you-throw, and I think, oh, Natick has, most of the communities have that, and they have restrictions, yeah.
Didn't CM&amp;D just have to pick up another mattress? Can we speak with it?
Matt's sandbox, bring it up.
Yeah. Those are the big ones. They shoot up a ground out of Framingham, Natick, and drop off the big stuff on hunting.
There's industrial refuse, and tires, and cement blocks, and you name it.
So you'd have to enforce that dumping. It's tough, because the state, it wasn't environmental bond built, but I think it got pulled out, where they're actually limiting the per capita refuse disposal that a community could have. And I still wonder what, I still wonder what that would do globally to the dumping issue, because it is a, I don't know, a double-edged sword, that's all I'll say.
Well, I think, one, just to move this along, I think a lot of people are in support of forming a committee. I don't know what we would call the committee. Is it something we could set up tonight? And I would ask you, Kim, would you be willing to start up this committee as a chairperson?
I would.
And then we...
So in order to do that, if I could, could you prepare like a charge, a description of what the committee would do? And then we can vote at our next meeting to create the committee with this charge, and then we go through...
Advertising.
Advertising. We'll see who applies, then we'll pick, it should be like five people. We're not looking for, you know, 25 people.
I think it's very important to have students involved in this.
I think that's a great idea.
I really do. So I think some of it...
Because a lot of the high schools are looking for community service hours as well.
... formation may have to wait until the kids are back, but do you, gentlemen, have any input in terms of the charter of this committee that you would...
I think just use common sense, I mean, what you, you think it could do.
You've got some great ideas, I think.
And we're happy to...
To investigate and to look into ways to control and limit the...
We have two lawyers here that'll edit anything you write.
Excellent. Okay.
Some DS students came to this board a few months ago, asking the town to consider a ban on plastic bags. We suggest that they might want to just talk to the few businesses in town that use plastic bags. For instance, Sherburne Wine does not use plastic bags, to see if they would do it voluntarily. Dover, I think, passed that.
Dover passed, they went to town meeting and passed the ban. So there's a group of middle school, I think it's middle schoolers, maybe they're going to high school now, I'm not sure. That may be a good spot to get some of these students involved.
Okay.
Because there's no reason you have a committee, we can't have students on your committee.
I would love that. I think that's really important to the success of sort of starting to re-educate people about litter.
Yeah, the community centers use student directors very effectively for a good while.
Excellent. Okay, will do.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much, Kim.
Thank you very much.
And if you, if you want to be in touch with Diane about when you, when you work on getting a charter or a charge, whatever, you can communicate with her to get on the agenda.
Absolutely, will do. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kim.
Thank you.
All right.
Did you leave that bag here, please?
I didn't. It went into a barrel.
He's going to put that, there's a, there's a car in the parking lot that...
[laughter]
All right. The next item on the agenda is a discussion surrounding the possibility of appointing a permanent building committee. I added this to the agenda. We've talked about it a couple of times relating to the library. I think, I just wanted to get kind of a barometer of the other board members of what you think on this. So then, as building projects come up in town, and also not just new building projects, but working with Sean on the inside onsite on the buildings that we have, and what projects should be prioritized, to have a committee that looks at all that, I think, could be very helpful. Because we have a lot of construction experts in town, as we've seen some of the members of the Library Build Committee, that this, this could be something very helpful.
So this has come up before.
Yep.
One of the towns that I represent has a permanent building committee, and they're really super people, just wonderful, a lot of experience. All the projects they work on have been well-done, under budget. Every year after town meeting, I go through the town meeting warrant and pick out the projects that they should be working on. The problem is that the list of projects that they're working on is something like 20 to 30 projects per year, because it's a big town. When it came up before, the question was, well, how often does Sherburne do a building project? And then when you look at that over the years, you know, we built the Highway Garage, we built the DPW facility. We, we built Town Hall. We built the police station. But they're, they're fairly widely spaced. The whole point of having a permanent building committee is that they're really working on 20 projects at the same time, and they're trying to find efficiencies. They try, they can often, you know, if they're doing paving on one building and there's some extra, they can send them over to do the other building or do both buildings at the same time. I mean, there's all kinds of things that can be done, but we're not at that scale.
No.
To do that.
And we never will be, but I guess that was why I wanted to bring up the question.
Would the group include implementing the insight report on maintenance? Because right now, I think I'd be interested in Sean and David's view, because I think they basically have taken the lead on identifying and prioritizing that. But is the thought that this would include not just construction, but also maintenance?
That's, that's my thought. I mean, I don't know what everybody else thinks.
It's hard, Sean can speak to this a lot, too. It's hard, the onsite insight report doesn't distinguish between, it tells you, here's the work you should do in the next five years. It doesn't distinguish between what's maintenance and what's capital. They don't view that, they just view it as work on a building. And so it's a little bit hard to do that. And theirs is, it's a very useful report, and I think we're going to update it, but it's somewhat statistically based. So if you have a hot water heater, it's a 20-year useful life, some things may not expire when the statutory expiration date is, so you can't take everything with a grain of salt. My idea is maybe it's not a committee, maybe it's an advisory panel, so that, I'll give you an example, we're working on a library right now, and we need a masonry expert. If we just had a standing advisory committee, they may not even have to meet regularly, but if we had people who are almost like waiting in the wings and could identify their expertise, and then if a particular topic came up, then one of the people in town managed a project would have someone to call on rather than having to nose around. I don't know, Sean, do you want to add anything to that?
Uh, I could walk it up. The, there's two sides to the point. We do tend to span quite a number of years between projects. We also tend to burn our building committees out, ask anyone that's been on one. So we have to get better at executing, so that by the time the, you know, the building's done, you don't have everyone checking out and not wanting to be involved. I mean, the benefit of it is even if they're not the experts on whatever the next building is, whether it be a school, DPW, or treatment plan, there's the nuances that are uniquely Sherburne, and we have some, that you can at least keep them from making perhaps the same mistakes or know the infrastructure. The benefit is I know the infrastructure, so, you know, if it was another project on the campus, you have that knowledge. The benefit is I know the infrastructure, so, you know, if it was another project on the campus, you have that knowledge. You keep losing the knowledge, because one group takes off, and then the next, and then the next. I mean, if you try to work on Pine Hill, I doubt you can find someone in the building committee at Pine Hill.
Frank Hes.
Frank Hes, maybe, yeah.
When it comes to managing projects on the inside onsite, would it be helpful to have a group to go to on that? Or do you think you and David are doing an adequate job of it?
I think at least for this year, it's gonna be helpful, I mean, we, we didn't consistently kick that off since we got it, so now we're five years old, we're trying to update it to almost restart and catch up, because the library shuffled some, some order around anyway. And what's gonna be important is, is having the buy-in consistently from this board advisory. The capital budget committee, which Jeff chaired till now, which is part of advisory, as you know, went through that pretty thoroughly. Again, it's, it's hopefully gonna be more organized as we're looking out and not, kind of, in rear and grabbing projects. I think we need just a little bit more consistency, a year or two out on those projects, and, and, and take off away from the library, because it's, it's consuming everything, consuming all the attention.
I remember another objection that came up, and that was the open meeting law. So, you create this committee, you put them in charge of these projects, they have to post meetings and have minutes. And when you're dealing with contractors, and you're going out to bid and all of that, they can get the copy of the minutes, and they can see a lot of information that you wouldn't otherwise put into a bid. Like, here's, here's the amount of money we have to spend, this is what we're really looking for. So, there was a concern about a formal committee having this whole extra layer of work that you have to do for minutes, postings, all of which is public.
Yeah, and I know the, the flip side of another committee is, the Governor's Task Force is looking at that issue, that there's, folks question how many committees we have, and the suggestion was it might be, might be a good idea to include a sunset provision. And also some criticism that at least a couple of committees might have overlapping jurisdiction. So, that's sort of the, the, the flip side. We've had enough problems with all of our building projects, that I think this is a good idea, it's just-
I think advisory, I think we could make it be advisory, so they don't have to regularly meet or something. Another problem that we came up with in the library is that we can't always, we're not able to direct the work. We have to allow the, uh, project manager, the engineer, architect, and OPM to direct the work. We can't really be directing the work, because it's their job to do that, and we don't wanna be liable if we, so you have to be very careful. You can advise, but you can't, you know, make decisions. You wanna add to that, am I overstating that? You're the only one here with expertise, you should speak up.
Um, I'm afraid if I speak up, I'll be on it.
Yeah, yeah.
There you go, I nominate him.
But I, I do, I do agree with Paul, for the, for the larger projects, not the maintenance, but larger projects, they're so few and far between. You know, certain things that I'm, I'm seeing on a certain project now, it's just kind of a, a storm of events. Like, it, it's hard to say, like, I would, I could say, to a few degrees, oh, you might do this different, you might do that different, but we have an incredibly experienced library build committee, incredibly experienced, incredibly knowledgeable, frankly, exceeding probably all the subcontractors on, on the aspect there. The only thing I could think of, we've made a short-term committee that set up some basic either like standards, and rules and procedures, and way that a contract works, and contracts structured, things that are, will be standardly on, like supplemental conditions, expectations from either designers or OPMs, and you actually make that into like a standard document. In Framingham, we did that, we did, um, construction standards, and we did a capital improvement program guide, and those go into every bid. So, every bid, anytime you go out to either professional services or contract, it's stuck in there as a-
That's a great idea.
As one of the documents. And you could do that, make like a twelve-month committee or something, to formulate something like that.
It's a great suggestion.
I really, I really do like that idea.
I think, but I also wanna go back to what Chuck said, and I think this is important, and maybe before we form a, this- Tonight, I just wanted to have a discussion about this, because I heard a few people mention it, but I'd like to go through, maybe at one of our next meetings, Diane, a list of the committees that we have, and let's see if some of them are redundant, or there's time to sunset some of these that aren't useful at this point. Let's, as, as we just talked about forming another committee with Kim Chester, and we have, we're talking about a building committee, are there other committees that, I think it's a good time to review our whole list and say, are there things that aren't needed at this point?
Yeah, and also, there's, if we're having trouble finding volunteers, I, it's great that some people will do this, the same thing. I was on, the first committee I served on in town was the recycling committee. We had the same people serving on it for a long time, which is good and bad. At some point, particularly some of the committees with broader jurisdiction, if there are volunteers, there probably should be some turnover, so.
Recycling. Recycling committee should recycle.
Recycle the recycling committee.
We were so committed to recycling.
More trash by the roadside, one or the other.
So, so I think maybe, Diane, let's look at the agendas, and we'll, we'll go through the, we'll have another committee discussion at another, at a future meeting.
Yeah, and I can also give you a list of the committees that we did sunset, not that many years ago.
Okay, that'd be great, so we can see where we've been, and, and, because there are, I mean, three of us that are only short-termers at this point, so. It'd be good to see what's kind of happened in the last few years with that.
Checkmate.
All right, Heidi, you're up next.
Good evening, Heidi Doyle, Town Treasurer. I'm here to speak about the library and the need to borrow, trying to work the best here with the information that I've gotten, and trying to figure out the timing of when's the best time to move forward here with this. We have summer approaching, a bunch of different factors, DLS doesn't wanna hear about anyone in June unless it's an emergency, so that looks at, right now, July timing is the earliest we could do something. We have about nine hundred and eight thousand of funds left right now, to, that's, without borrowing anything, that's available for use. And the latest project forecast that I had gotten from Sharon, our finance director, back on five twenty-two, is the project is at ten point nine eight, roughly, and the expected burn rate with, we were told, maybe about five months to October would be it. So, there's about two point three, two point four million to be spent within these next five months, which was close to five hundred thousand a month burn rate. Very difficult to get more information, but based on that, we were gonna have two months left of funds, so.
Slow down a little bit.
Sure, sorry, I'm trying to get everybody.
We're at ten point eight?
Nine eight.
Ten point-
That's the total cost, yeah.
Ten point nine eight two.
I have Sharon's model open here, that's the total cost of the project.
We spent ten, ten-
No, that's the total cost.
This is the expected project, this is the project cost, the expected projection.
To complete, which we talked about at that meeting back in-
December was one that, it's gone up a bit.
I have Sharon's model open here, if you want me to walk you through it, or you can do it, your way.
Because that, what I don't understand is, is ten million to complete, someone just said?
No, 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 the whole project, instead, from what we're looking at, the finished project as of May was ten point nine, that we need to reach, from what we've gained so far, funds and our gap, and we have a gap of about, close to two point four million, that we need in funds to reach the finished estimate of ten point nine.
But the S, ten point nine eight is an estimated completion cost.
Correct.
Not what we've spent to date.
No, 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 not what we spent today.
Not what we need to spend to complete it, it's, it's the total cost all in, and it's a projection.
It's a projection.
It doesn't include the contin-, remember, we had the meeting in early December, you said of two point two additional million needed from the town, two hundred thousand, which was the contingency, so that doesn't include the two hundred thousand dollar contingency, it's not in there. And that figure is including an extension of leasing the community center and everything else through the end of November of this year. So, we don't, part of the problem in estimating the cost is we don't know the completion date, but-
Yeah, what is the latest-
Right now, it's based on completing it in the end of November.
End of November.
Correct. That's what, that's not what the schedule says, the schedule still says September, I think, but for conservative purposes, the budget she created, the ten point nine eight two is, is based on the end of November.
So, so Heidi, you say we have nine hundred thousand available to spend at this point, and how much more is it to complete at this point?
Well, as I said, I can go through that if you want.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So, we've spent through the end of, I guess it's through four eleven, she said, we'd spent seven million of that. So, in other words, there's four million left to spend, total, roughly. That's after, I think maybe the May invoice has come in already, I think it was a hundred ninety-eight thousand for May, but we had estimated there was four million to come in, but of the original, of the, let's say eleven million dollar cost, or say the total cost, we have nine million secured, which is the sum of four point one million from gifts, three point eight million from grants. I have the, I can print this out later.
Oh, because some of the grants, don't, we don't get until the very end of the project.
Correct, on grants.
That's right.
A million, a bond, she's already bonded a million dollars, and I don't know if your numbers, when you say there's nine hundred thousand left, we have a hundred ninety-eight from free cash, too.
That's already included in that, yeah. What the problem was, the, what Sharon had sent out, we already then had the May invoice after, so that's why Sharon's number went down to the nine hundred.
No, I know that, yeah, yeah, so in other words, what we're showing right now is, of all the funding, we have eleven million dollar project in total, roughly, we have committed funding of nine million, so in total, we're expecting to need two more million from the town.
Right.
Except for the, my caveat of the two hundred thousand contingency, you know, for example, some of these legal experts we might have. So, but, we don't have the fund, we don't have, we have to also meet the fact that we're not getting all the funding from the state, right? Some of it, I think, till a year after the project.
We've known that all along.
So, so what she needs to borrow in total, we need to come up with spending in the next, to the remainder of the project is around four million dollars, that what she has, nine hundred thousand, you said nine hundred roughly? So, in other words, we have around three point one million dollars that we're needing to come up with.
Of that, we're gonna have reimbursed seven or eight hundred thousand yet from the state.
At the end.
One year afterwards, yeah.
One year after.
So, how much, I'm, I have a real basic question, what's the, the ban gonna be for?
This is what I actually was trying to come, I've been asking people to say, what's the burn rate, and what do I need to borrow? And I can't get a deadline on what the actual number is. All I know is, we have about two months, two and a half months left of money that I feel that'll cover it, and then I think we're out. So, we need to come up with some number that we can work with, and it's been a moving target. Hearing from Jeff, I'm getting emails today, we're somewhere in the two to two point four, I don't know if this three is gonna be needed. I talked with the DLS today, and they were saying I might actually have to do two borrowings, one, a separate one for the grant anticipation note. They think that that is now had to be a separate issuance, which I was not aware of, I thought we could do one issuance, but they're saying that they would probably want to see it separate.
You also-
They said the dates might be different, and they wanna, so.
In addition to that, I wanna underscore what Chuck just said, he used the word ban, right, but everybody else was using the word bond. We don't wanna do any bonds.
No.
We wanna do short-term bans, and roll them over if necessary, because there's too many uncertainties.
Exactly.
Plus, at some point, hopefully, we're gonna recover some money from somebody.
Right, and you, you should, it makes no sense to do a bond if the project costs haven't been identified.
Right.
So, I, I am looking at bans, and you can do a ban up to ten years, so I mean, so, at, at some point, we may decide we wanna do a long-term bond of one point five million, and the rest of the bans for ten, up to ten years, to keep reducing money. I mean, there's a bunch of varieties that it can go. I just am looking at a ban right now to cover us, so that I don't run out of money to paying bills.
That was my point, I was gonna, trying to agree with Chuck here, because he was the first one to brought up the word ban, in our discussion here. That, let's stick to bans at this point in time.
So, one of them might have to be for the seven hundred and twenty-six thousand that we get from the state library building committee, one year after completion.
Correct.
And that's a grant anticipation note.
Correct.
A GAN.
A GAN, instead of a ban.
Instead of a ban. I'm not comfortable authorizing a ban without having some dollar figure, I mean, this-
Well, we know, we have a dot, we're telling you that we need to come up-
I have not heard how much the ban is gonna be for.
Yeah, your number, Jeff, is different from her number.
We have to decide, no, it's not different at all.
You said three, I heard three million from you, and I heard two point four from her.
We, we're anticipating we need to spend another four million dollars to complete the project, she has around nine hundred thousand. So, we need to come up with three point one million in total to complete the project, is what we're saying. Plus, if the two hundred thousand contingency, I mentioned, it might be three point three million. So, that's what we need to come up with.
Don't, my numbers, I'm, I'm not able to get accurate numbers right now, that's why I said I would go by, Jeff has more.
I understand, but the problem is, you know, it's based on what we get invoiced. So, they, they, they gave us a projection two weeks ago for what the invoices would be. The projection for May was seven hundred forty-nine thousand, and it ended up being a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, okay? So, that's what we're, you wanna, you wanna add anything here, you, you have as much knowledge as anyone.
Uh, well, there's been a lot of discussion with people trying to analyze the monthly burn rate, which means nothing at this point.
Yes.
There's no point in extrapolating that out over the next few months. You need to just take the end date, the assumed end date, the assumed end number, and add credit.
Yeah.
We, we know we're gonna get hit with a couple of heavy months, they're, they're out there, because there's stuff here that hasn't been accepted, but when it gets done, there's some pretty heavy months coming, and she can't cover two of them, she's saying two of them, but that's, that's based on the state rate, but there won't be, there's gonna be a hit, though, but shoot that whole thing up.
But why do we have to borrow money now, today?
You don't have to.
We have to pay an invoice, probably starting in August, September, that we don't have the money for right now.
Right, I'm looking at, you know, when I talked-
But that's two months away.
Yeah, but she's got a-
I'm, I was looking, when I talked with the DLS, they wanted a four to six-week lag time, and they said, preferably go towards a six-week because of all the end-of-the-year borrowings, so I was just coming today to get initial start from you to say, think, I mean, if we wanna wait till the next meeting to come up with a number, that's fine, but I can't wait much longer, because I'm concerned with Sean saying.
If you have to do this in two chunks, can we approve the grant anticipation note tonight? Because we know exactly what that's gonna be, and then figure out exactly what the ban's gonna be, and approve that at the next meeting.
Second.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the seven twenty-six is a known number.
Exactly.
We know that that's reimbursement that we have to wait a year for.
Right.
So, we can get you that, that gets you-
Well, and I'd rather-
One every month.
Right. No, I know, but that gets us a time to get a better number.
Probably get us to the end of the year. Nine hundred thousand plus that, we'll probably-
We have another meeting in two weeks, that maybe we'll have a better number by then, that we could approve a ban, knowing what the actual number is, rather than a lot of different things flying around. But at least we could, I would, like I said, I move that we allow the treasurer to proceed with a grant anticipation note of seven hundred and twenty-six thousand.
And I seconded it.
Okay, any other discussion on that? Go ahead.
You showed us an accurate number.
No, I'm not.
You do allow to exceed number.
We should, we should get that number exactly, I don't know, where do you, do you have that written down somewhere?
I just have it in this background with your-
Yeah, that was, and that was, and I'll have to go and get the exact dollar total.
Maybe we just say-
I wanna say up to, let's say up to seven hundred and fifty thousand maximum.
Okay, I'll revise it.
Accepted as a secondary.
So, it's the amount of the-
Whatever the last remaining amount.
State reimbursement due one year after completion.
Right.
Up to a maximum seven hundred fifty thousand, is that what I'm hearing?
I think I might just say, don't put the date in there, because we may get some money at completion and some more a year out, I don't know.
Nobody said anything about completion, I'm just saying, oh, I'm saying, the, the motion is to allow the treasurer to proceed with a grant anticipation note of up to seven hundred and fifty thousand. Not of a number not to exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, but do you wanna link it to the amount, but, but it's equal to the amount of the remaining funding coming from the library? Because we may, it may not all be a year later, some may come at completion.
That's fine, I mean, it's a grant anticipation note, it doesn't-
Yeah, okay, but it's, link, it needs to, the motion needs to link it to the grant amount.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It has to be.
Seven fifty is an estimate, because we don't know the exact number.
Right, we're saying a not-to-exceed number.
Yeah.
When he used the word grant anticipation note, that presupposes everything you're mentioning.
Okay.
It has to be a grant to back it up, because you can't-
And maybe I'm looking at it too simplistically, I mean, why wouldn't it authorize whatever the grant is? You know what I mean, is, is there any real harm in that, just take whatever that max is of that grant, authorize that, it's a grant.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of what I'm saying.
Authorize, so we'll just authorize the treasurer to proceed with that grant anticipation note?
For the, for the full amount of the unpaid-
For the full amount of the unpaid state grant.
Correct.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay.
And if that's three point five million, you're comfortable with that?
I am, yes, I'll go pick up whose.
No, I'm just, I'm just pointing out that we don't know what that amount is.
Well, we, we have a general idea.
We don't, why inhibit any, anything that, why do anything that inhibits our ability to access the grant? I think, essentially, I think the financial people should have almost full license to access the grant. The grant can only be used for the library, it can wait down with the authorization of like the library building committee, a vote of the trustees, and then, you know, any change- of the trustees, and then, you know, any change orders from us. There's always so many checks and balances in there. I wouldn't inhibit any use of the grant at all, because it's not, it's, you know, essentially inhibiting our own access to free money.
The other option is to wait 2, we're meeting 2 weeks and get the exact number.
I don't think it matters. I would rather give her something to work on.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm okay with that, but Chuck doesn't feel comfortable, I don't, I don't know the exact number.
I just, I, that's why I was more comfortable with the not to exceed number.
Yeah.
Because.
Okay.
It just feels unlimited, I.
Yeah, I got that part.
I, I trust Heidi, but I don't, you know.
What if the grant is more than.
Trust and verify or something.
What if the grant is more than 750, though? What if the remaining grant is more than 750?
Yeah, I think.
I, I'm, I'm fine waiting the 2 weeks, if we want to come, I would still like to have 2 separate votes, I think that would be helpful, but we're not going to get.
Why don't we do that? Why don't we hold off any votes until 2 weeks from now?
And we'll figure out the exact amount.
And you'll have the exact numbers, and then I think everybody will be more comfortable voting on exact numbers.
There's a clear consensus that whatever the amount of this is, Sean?
Well, later at the time, unless you plan it out before you don't go on that. The next, the next pay rate could easily be 750.
See, that's what I was going to bring up.
900 is gone, and you won't have the next borrow before the next pay rate after that. Pay rates come, and then we're paying them within 2 weeks to stay within the contract. So if you push that calendar on, it takes us 6 weeks to get a ban, you won't have that money in time to try that out. I don't think we're going to have any.
Well, I'm counting on 6 weeks, including giving a 2-week leeway here with coming in, because I've already talked to DOR, to DLS today, so they know the heads up are coming. I feel comfortable 6 weeks from today, even in 2 weeks, they'll get it through.
The one thing I want to add, though, kind of to Sean's point, is I've never seen a project with a less predictable burn rate. It's going to be a lot, it's going to be nothing, it's going to be all over the place, especially if some of these other provisions we're asking for start kicking in. Um, I don't, say what you want, I'm still willing to vote in favor of a, of a max fee, whatever the max of the grant is, so I'm willing to vote in favor.
Yeah, and I agree with that. Let's, let's do it. Let's vote it tonight.
Okay. So, so there's a motion and a second on the table to allow the treasurer to proceed with a grant anticipation note, and the amount that's to be reimbursed by the state once the project is completed.
From the state, because I did, I did actually in another tab find the exact numbers. There's 2 other items in addition to the 726, there's an MBLS green project grant and an ever-source grant that totaled another 110. We're only talking about the base library grant, I think.
Only the library one is the one, only the library one is the one I know right now that we can go.
Well, there's 2, 2 libraries, 1, there's a mass library green project grant separate from the.
Okay, and I don't, I don't, I'm only talking about payment 5.
We're only talking about that.
Payment 5.
The library grant, yep.
Okay.
So all those in favor? Great.
And then any help you could do to help get a number for next meeting?
Yeah, Jeff, if you want to work with her to.
Yeah, yeah, I, I mean.
Make sure she's got, that we've got the number that we want to talk about on the ban, that would be great.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is administration of special projects, this is a request of Jeff Waldron to discuss a few things, so.
Yeah, so I don't have a list yet, but I, I have a few ideas for special projects I think we should consider. I thought maybe at a subsequent meeting, we should, we can discuss them individually. But I have some ideas on things I think could sort of streamline our processes, and also some things that might need special attention. One of which is, I think we need to find a way for the select board to work more closely with advisory committee, particularly with regards to guidance, because what I've seen from the advisory from the other perspective is that it really puts the select board at a disadvantage, because advisory's sat down and figured out what we can afford for next year by working with, you know, the assessor's office and each budget maker, but select board hasn't really seen too much of that. So, so I'd kind of like to see advisory do some of this analysis in October, and maybe before they issue the guidance letter, have a joint meeting with the select board to say, this is the guidance we're going to give the budget makers, so the select board understands, you know, what our constraints are, and, you know, what things we're looking at in the next year. So seems like, we seem to come together in late February or early March, rather than in advance, so that's one thing, that's one of my special projects.
I think it's, I think it's a good idea in part because while advisory every year at the annual town meeting talks about the impact of services, budget, the tax rate.
Yes.
I, I think there's an educational piece that we need to be involved with as well, which is, we can't continue to provide the same level of services without either increasing the tax base or raising taxes. And so I, that's such a basic point that.
Because we need to consider making it be in a joint guidance letter.
Right.
I think, I think the guidance would still come from advisory, but at the same time, I like the idea of more, everybody being on the same page with the global, global view, because I think for too long, a lot of the budget makers are working in silos instead of seeing the global picture, which when I was on advisory, we started doing those meetings with everyone so they could see the total picture, not just their own individual budgets. And I think this would help, this would help that.
Particularly besides the schools, I mean, most of the major budgets report to the select board also, so I think it's important to have an understanding of where we are financially.
Absolutely. And I think also, the other, the other thing I would like to work on with advisory on that note, is in the spring, I think as soon as we can, after December 31st, we need to start meeting with our budgets, so we can be done going through all our budgets as early as possible before they go to advisory. I know the last couple of years, some people have gone back and forth between advisory and select board, but they shouldn't be going to advisory until we've already finished our analysis on our budgets.
Just a second there. Most governments have an executive branch and a legislative branch, and the executive branch really is supposed to create a vision and a goal for the upcoming year, and prioritize where the available dollars need to go most. Like, for example, Sean said we needed to do trees, and he came to us, kind of laid in the cycle, but we adopted that, that that was an important budgetary priority, is to take care of the trees for all the reasons that were articulated. Well, it's really the role of the executive branch, if you will, to identify spending priorities in the executive branch that need to be done, and not just abdicate that and pick it up almost too late in the, in the process. So I like the idea of earlier, trying to figure out what are the.
Right, looking at it globally.
Yes. What, where do we want to go? Where does the town, where do we, as the elected representatives of the people, think the town should be spending money and, and giving priority in the next year?
And that's a great example, because we ended up funding the trees, but it was, if we, we could have coordinated that better.
Well, Sean and I were meeting on this in November, December of last year, so it wasn't a surprise to either one of us.
So you just didn't want to talk to us?
Well, we were just trying to strategize, but that goes to, one of my suggestions for advisory is what I do, when I, you know, so advisory is a 9-person team, but each team member has assignments, so I would start in November and December, meeting with my budget makers, because my goal was that when they finally submit their budget at the end of the year, it had already been sort of vetted, and it wasn't like their first pass, so that's kind of what Sean, he and me, and we did that together. We collaborated on that, and other, I did that with the library, Elizabeth and I did that, I reiterated 3 or 4 times before she submitted anything, so that makes it be a cleaner process, too. So I, separately, so I'll, I'll come up by our next meeting with some possible topics. There are some specific topics I think we need to think about. One example, I'm not picking on police department, but police overtime is a big one to think about, because right now, we're spending around 400,000 dollars a year, I believe, in police overtime. So I know Rick's got a steady going on of staffing, but there may be things that we can do, whether it's adding more officers so that you have more people available to give straight time shifts instead of overtime. It can be things like maybe increasing the salary rates a little bit, because one of the things that happens, if officers come here and get trained and get a very good offer somewhere else, they leave. Now you hire someone new, they have to go to the school to get training, and you use police overtime to cover their shifts while they're training. So we cause them to be a little bit high, more highly paid, they might not resign as frequently. Looking at the turnover rate is an issue. There's all kinds of issues, but that's one type of topic which I think will require some understanding and.
And I think, and I like, and I like that you're being proactive on that. I did talk to Rick last year at the budget, during budgets, and I said.
Yeah.
We need to talk about your staffing levels before we get to budget season next year, so we can try to manage this overtime number.
Yes.
And I, and I know, like you said, he's working on it, they've got a study going to figure out exactly what the staffing level should be, but.
So I, I'll probably have maybe half a dozen topics like that, that I think are worthy of, some of them, they may be things where even the select board's not the primary mover on it, but we ask someone to look into it and report back to us or something like that, so I don't, I just wanted to give you a heads up.
Thanks.
Good idea.
Okay. Onto the routine business, town administrator report. Diane?
Um, yeah, this is just a quick note, that David did meet, oh my God, excuse me, I'm sorry. He did meet with the town administrator in, from Holliston, about the earmark, and they're really kind of taking it slow at this point. They don't seem to be in a hurry to.
Do you have his note? Do you want me to read what he?
Yeah, I, I printed it out to you, but.
Yeah, I've got it right here. He just said, what he said was, he met with the Holliston Town Administrator last week to discuss possibilities involving a shared position between the 2 towns, for which there's a $50,000 earmark in the governor's budget bill for this. I don't want to give too many details in case Holliston hasn't had a public discussion about it, but it's my take that what is on the table for Sherburne is possible 12,500, which will be Sherburne's 25% share, since we are roughly 25% the size of Holliston. David recommends we proceed at our own pace with approving a job description and posting it, and explore options to get the basis covered on this function sooner rather than later, and using town funds. I believe we should already have boots on the ground in Sherburne, making progress before any of the earmark dollars are available, which will only be once the 2 communities can arrive at an agreement on the position that minimally meets the undefined shared concepts in the earmark.
So just to clarify, the Holliston Town Administrator thinks that the reimbursement should be based on population, not hours worked?
That's, I just literally read.
I know, even wrote.
So.
I don't know exactly the issue we were concerned about.
So that's, yeah, we don't want Holliston, that's, and that's exactly what Mike Yamas said.
We're supposed to have a little bit more power over our future for 12,500 dollars.
So I think, I think we should proceed with writing our job description, as we said before, and let's make a decision what we need in Sherburne, and if it works out with another town, so be it, but I don't think we need to wait on anything with Holliston.
Just if I could, the budget hasn't passed. Where it is now is in conference committee, because there were differences between the House and the Senate, and they're hoping and praying they'll have it done by June 30th, yeah, June 30th, in order to start funding the government as of July 1, but they have been known to do continuing resolutions with temporary funding, and take it even longer if they needed to. This earmark is in that budget, so it hasn't, it hasn't even passed yet, we're already